I'd like to call the 1st of May, 2023, meeting of the Lower Southford Township. Where supervisors, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. All right, it's at this point in the meeting where we open the floor. For public discussion period, is there anyone wishing to be recognized? Hearing none, we will move to the consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve items A, B, and C of the consent agenda. So moved. Moved then seconded, all in favor say aye, aye, those say nay. Let's have it. Committee reports zoning hearing board.
There are no applications for me. Ali Park Board.
Well, the next meeting of the park board is this month, May 23rd in this room at seven, actually. We're not going to be meeting here, we're going to be meeting at Pepper Plains Farmstead at seven o'clock. Um, and this Saturday is the Herb Festival at the Pepper Plains Farmstead from nine until one.
That's a fun time for those who haven't attended.
You know, it really is, it's more, you know, you can go out there and get a whole pie from the bake oven, they'll have the bake oven working that things like two centuries old, it's, it's amazing.
It's a great opportunity to plant us at this.
It really is. Go early if you want the best selection.
And the Jacob Rice Park will be hosting the Montgomery County Conservation District Board meeting this month. Ryan from the Forgiving Watershed is taking everybody on a tour of the new greenhouse facility. The recently completed stormwater improvements over in that area, so the conservation board. See that?
And the new barn doors.
And the new barn doors, that's next Wednesday, next Thursday.
No fire chief? That leads it to you, Don.
Pretty valuable rest here, we had a total of five hundred and eighteen falls in our voice taken. So the Harleyville Station with a hundred and eighty-two falls. Hundred and fourteen of those were in Lower Southford, forty-seven in Franktonia, and twenty-one in other surrounding towns. Uh, for activities for the month, uh, we need our community wellness division, we've been in a local senior health expo. Off train exercise with the Lower Southford Township's emergency management. We also participated in a multi-agency tabletop training for an activity over every final.
Thanks, great. All right, communications committee.
Thank you, Chairman, sure. Communications committee is currently researching different texting services that serve townships. We are also exploring texting options that our township may be already able to implement. We plan to outline our findings and research to present to the board in the future. We also are revisiting our initiative and reaching out to local businesses and hope they will consider hanging our township quick reference guides. Our next meeting will be held both here and via Zoom on May seventeenth at seven thirty PM, and as always, we encourage residents to attend and share your thoughts.
Good, thank you.
Recreational Authority, unfortunately, I was absent at the last meeting, but I understood we did a tour of the course. Yes. And the financial numbers for March are in, the course is doing very well. Um, to give you an idea, I think for the first three months of the year, we had budgeted approximately two thousand rounds of golf and blade. And we came in at thirty-seven fifty, so nearly twice what we invited, yeah, so.
That is more.
Good, good weather, brings golfers, that's all I can, that's all I can. Anyway, steady, steady as she goes. All right, unfinished business, we're gonna start with the walkable letter rock feasibility study with our esteemed colleague Stefan Butler will discuss briefly.
Thank you very much, um, I'm here tonight just to give a brief presentation on the status of the walkable letter acts feasibility study. Um, so we're about a third of the way through the process. This is just a summary of what's happened in the area, it's two thousand and five with various studies. Um, between the heritage corridor study all the way up to where we are now, uh, as well as with some Monco um, studies that have been done in the past, so we are now taking all of that previous information and using it to formulate this walkable letter extending. Um, our purpose is obviously to make Letter Act Village more walkable, retain and promote the village character, plan for the future relocation of one thirteen, um, and then also to provide regional bicycle and pedestrian connections, and you can see at the bottom, this is all the different types of users that we are planning for. Um, the project budget does have a hundred, uh, one hundred thousand dollar budget grant through the transportation and community development initiative, also known as TC DI through the Delaware Valley Regional Plan Commission, Lower Southford is the project sponsor in the sense that they were the recipient of the grant. Um, and then obviously the team includes obviously township, uh, DPRPC, McMahon, and our subconsultant NTM through the environmental station. Here we are in the project schedule, where are the uh, I'll say May, we're at the, the circle about, um, two thirds of the way down, we're at the Board of Supervisors meeting presentation. Uh, we have conducted a lot of the work leading up to this, including a field view, um, and we are looking at the, um, public meeting, first large public meeting will be held. We are looking at three areas, one being the edge of the village, which is obviously a larger area around the village of Letter Act. We have the village core, um, which is really just exactly that, the village core, um, so we're really looking at the, the building, the area and the constraints that we have within the village core itself. But, and the next, that seems what we're calling the gateways, so as we come into um, the village of Letter Act along one thirteen, along Southfordville Road, along Cross Road, we're looking at how do we define the village gateway so that people traveling along these roadways understand they are entering the village and they will adjust, I'll say their, their habits, I guess, as you, as you go through the village. And then, as I mentioned, the edge, which is much further out, um, but just to, to give an idea of where some of this, these, um, paths and connections will ultimately lead to, whether it's other township parks, um, other, um, neighborhood areas, uh, that, that we can ultimately connect to. Activities today, um, so as I mentioned, the background data now at this, we do have an environment strength summary that has been completed. Um, and obviously, as I'm sure you're aware, there's, uh, two eligible sort properties, um, in the village. Uh, we did complete a field visit on April eleventh, um, and noted a lot of existing, um, conditions out there that are going to be used to develop the alternatives as we move forward. Uh, we have completed counts and traffic analysis, and we are hoping to finish up our stakeholder interviews. Uh, we have met with identified folks, uh, we're still waiting to hear back from a few others. Uh, but at the bottom, some of the concerns we've heard is, obviously, it's currently very uncomfortable to walk or bike within the village because it is so tight. And there is a, a large volume of traffic that's using one thirteen, um, a lack of identity entering the village core, uh, and less commercial activity with uh, what we're calling here a one-way option, and I'll, that'll be discussed further, further, uh, down the rest there. Uh, what people would like to see is some off-road internal paths with crossing enhancements, connections to existing parks and trails, and a gateway slash wayfinding to enhance awareness of the village. Um, our next trail and sidewalk committee meeting is coming up this Monday, May eighth, um, and the trail and sidewalk committee is really serving as the initial stakeholder group, um, with representatives, representatives from, uh, various boards and planning commissions and. Um, so we're gonna be really diving into, uh, the, the alternatives, the traffic analysis, um, and developing some conceptual, conceptual plans that we're gonna be then ultimately, uh, working towards presenting to the public. Most importantly, here we have a public workshop that we have scheduled for Thursday, June fifteenth. This room, uh, from six thirty to eight thirty, we will do a brief presentation for the public at seven o'clock, but we'll really have stations set up to talk to people and get their input and feedback, um, and we're hoping for a good, a good turnout, uh, for that, so, um, next slide please. Um, here is just the invitation for the community open house, um, this is obviously part of this presentation, but we are gonna be distributing this, posting it on the website, and specifically sending it out to, um, obviously, the property owners within the village area, because we do want to encourage as many people to come and participate and be heard, um, at that, at that event, um. That is where we're at, um, we, we, once we have the public meeting, we will then probably go back to the trail and sidewalk committee and refine some of that information, and then you'll probably see me back here again further down the road, um, this is a reminder, the project and study does have to be all of the five. Still have some time, uh, but we do have to. Progress as we get to that, and it'll ultimately have to be approved, um, through the township. Any question?
For the, uh, open house, you said there will be a brief presentation of a station, would you?
Yeah, so we're gonna basically set up for the first half an hour, let people come in, kind of ask casually some questions, fill them in. We'll then do a presentation, um, and then encourage people to stick around, set up our stations and have people come talk to us after they've heard a little bit more about the project, so we want an opportunity for them to, you know, hear a little bit about it, but also think about what they want us to know.
And, and the reason I ask that is just to ask my colleagues here, how do we feel about taking it, the presentation, so we could have that on YouTube as well? It's the presentation, just so that people can reference that too. And we have to, yeah, consider them. Think that might be a good move.
Yeah, and I think it'll be similar, you know, we'll, we'll have slides that sort of posted even after the event, if that, you know, to, to be part, you know, for people to refer back. But we do plan on having a lot of different mapping and ideas for people to really kind of visualize what we're anticipating for representation.
So the public notice is gonna be everyone that's within the edge? Okay, good answer.
All of them. I don't know that we will get all of them.
No, we're gonna.
But they are all going to be aware that there is this event happening.
All right, any other questions for seven?
Thank you.
All right. One more unfinished business item ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh two to adopt the twenty eighteen ICC International Fire Code and establish an annual fire inspection program for specific uses within the township.
I think at this point, I pass a group to.
That's it, I'll keep it myself. So all this is gonna do is adopt the, uh, current.
Did I look confused? No, usually he says be advertised, but it's improperly advertised. What?
Hopefully, there's not a hearing for.
No, you don't need a hearing for this, and it says consideration to adopt web soon. It's just been on the agenda.
It is on the agenda.
And advertised.
That's why I wanted to make, usually, yeah, just make sure it's been properly advertised and. And if I do it wrong, we'll go over. All right, so I'd like to have a motion, or I'd entertain a motion for, to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh two.
I would make an ordinance to adopt twenty twenty-three oh two to adopt the twenty eighteen ICC International Fire Code and establish an annual fire inspection program for specific uses within Lower Southford Township.
I will second, move then seconded, all in favor say aye, aye, those say nay. Let's have it, all right.
She can't be real quick on that too, I would assume we will be sending out a notification letter, like a heads up, this program's gonna be starting to the people who will be affected by it, and then the program will kick in so that there's free warning, so to speak, okay.
Pretty fair.
Yes.
All right, moving on to new business, uh, a motion, I would take a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixteen, which will establish the fees for the fire inspection program.
Right, so moved.
Move then seconded, all in favor say aye, aye, those say nay. All right, next up will be resolution twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, Thirty Fritz Road, formerly known as Fifty-Nine Fritz Road, waiver of land development for PDC Machines Outdoor Testing Area.
Yes, good evening, my name is Dan Raleigh, I'm here tonight representing PDC Machines. Uh, they are the tenant at Thirty Fritz Road here in Lower Southford Township. So PDC is proposing to build an accessory structure, we're calling it, uh, the outdoor testing area, and it's to be utilized for outdoor testings of the units that they're manufacturing at the facility. It's comprised of a control panel, a canopy structure, a hydrogen tank, and two separation walls. So the units will be fully manufactured in the existing building. Um, once the assembly is done, they're taken outside and they're tested, and they're tested in three phases, which typically lasts about three weeks' time. Um, there's two technicians required to start the testing phase, no additional employees are being hired because of this, and no employees are stationed outside. It's all remote operated from inside, um, so there's no one stationed outside or anything like that. Uh, no buildings are proposed as a part of the project. Under both the township code and the MPC, land developments are really only required for the construction of buildings, the development of buildings. So that's not the case here, so we don't really believe that land development approval is required. Um, but there was a concern from township staff that they wanted the recorded plans to match what is built there, so we had a discussion and they requested that we request this land, but this waiver of land development. Um, township staff also allowed us to file the building permit application while this waiver was pending, so that was filed with township late last week. We received a CPS, CKS review letter, um, on May first, it's a pretty clean letter, we're, we'll comply on everything, on all of the comments. There is one comment I did want to address upfront, and it's more of a, a point of clarification, and that's comment twelve. So comment twelve recommends that the waiver be contingent on, uh, the two phases of the overall land development both being certified as complete by the township, I, we were just a little concerned that, um, that that language was a little vague. My, my understanding is that the comment is in response to some lag time with the as-built plans being submitted from the prior land development, those have been submitted now, so I think we addressed the, uh, the spirit of that comment, but I did want to confirm that. Um, and really.
Hold on, right there.
Yeah.
Is half of the. Second half is addressing our punch list items.
Yeah, there's a response letter, yes. We're requesting, we're concerned, we're certifying.
And so sort of completely, all those items that you have showed, it is part of the land development plan, and, um, you guys did an inspection out with our, um, inspection staff, that, that list that we generated, the punch list, as we call it, that all those items are complete and the as-built plans are part of that. Right. Right, but we wanted, our, our comment is to maybe doing them together, because this land development has been going on for a while, it's been some time since most of the items were basically complete, and we didn't want it to linger on and on, and now the township has a a different, I'll, I'll say development, loosely, a different development before you to do something additional to this site without the original land development being certified as.
And we'd like to see the original land development put to bed, I think is what she's saying, so.
We're working on that. That the PDC is moving out of the existing place, needs to construct this testing.
Yeah, so that, that's the root of our concern, right, so PDC has a, they're currently operating on their location. Their Wormster location lease is up in June, they're moving everything here to Lower Southford, so if, if we're not able to you know, have this outdoor testing area up and running by the end of June, uh, it raises a lot of issues. Manufacturer tests these things.
What is outstanding on your punch list?
Very much, I was gonna say, there's very minor items left to be done, so, um, maybe you could get them done in the next week or so. If you have contractors, granted.
I have no control over weather, contractors, I mean, we're working on everything, yes. Okay, our, you know, maybe ten trees planted. Some inlet protection devices to pull out of the inlets. Township needs to go back and affect again. Our concern is the holding up the instruction that is quietly going to complete all the work on the original project, we need our escrows back. Now release the escrows on all items, we already have two separate resolutions. Holding the developer to complete all the land development.
Yeah, and obviously not going anywhere.
We hope not.
But it does strike me, I, I do this for a living myself. This is the time you do these things, you plant trees at this time, and inlet protection things, that's like, send a guy out there for half a day and it's done. So, you know, I'm not sure it's an unreasonable request by our engineer for those to get wrapped up, and it strikes me as they can be run concurrently at this point.
But the, having previous land development plan.
But concurrently means I want them wrapped up so that when you're occupying the, what we would approve, those are already done. That's what I think she asked for. Your objective showed, am I right, Michelle, is that what you're?
To give us a chance to go down to the event, if anything's wrong with the inlets. We've been waiting for months for that, same thing with the as-built plans, and that's all I'm saying is that we've been waiting for these things to get done, and we just don't want it to linger longer.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I mean, the, the issue you get to is you're staying there, so you don't have as much of incentive to close these out as someone who is trying to move out, move on, okay?
The owner, developer. For fifty dollars plus escrow incentive to get these items.
I, I'd say, I mean, I think that what we're asking for is not unreasonable, and they could run concurrently to the filler.
Development agreement gives a time limit of one year.
Yeah, like well exceeded that.
The, the municipality's planning code and your development agreement both say, finish all improvements in one.
But I, let me, hold that for one second, let me ask you questions. Are you basically taking up loading dock area with this? What is that area that's on the plan?
Located at the rear of the building adjacent to where some dock doors were. Those doors have been closed in.
Okay.
Part of the amended final plan.
Okay, so this is just a, a concrete pad area that was just.
Common, you know, it like blocked out some areas, north of there, we had part of our reserve parking. Uh, so this area that's not, that was not planning to be utilized for the unreserved loading docks.
Um, as part of your testing, it's an outside area, is there any discharge that comes off of this testing? Water or anything along that line, and where does that go if there is?
Yeah, it's basically, the, the only, you know, quote-unquote discharge is ultra-filtered water. Ultra-pure water, I guess, is the, uh, better term, and we'll have a third party come in and that. So it's.
Where's it go?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be in tanks.
Oh, okay, so it's in a tank, and then it's just sucked out and gone.
And.
So it's not being discharged into a storm drain, it's not going into the sanitary sewer. But, okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one question?
You may.
I thought that Michelle wanted the recorded plans to reflect what the waiver's being requested for, and I'm not sure if the waiver's granted, how that happens.
Recording the plan.
I don't understand your question, so.
If, if, if a waiver of land development is granted, there's no recording.
There is a recording because you know, especially.
Oh, the special handshake deal, okay, I forgot that.
I think it's on your, it's on your letter.
Her letter.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, you have to record a plan, right.
Just so nobody thinks that this is crazy, um, normally speaking, you have to file with the Montgomery County Planning Commission to get a number that will allow you to record plans. Um, certain attorneys know that you can go into the planning commission and wing, and they will give you a number without looking at the plan, so it can get recorded in sub-record for everybody. So. That's, uh, that's the. Yes, special, uh, yeah, special dispensation for something, um. Just so there's something of record that shows what this looks like. It's just like a, you know, a normal final plan, but they don't bother looking at it.
Mike, will they, might give you, will they, they, if they get a building permit for this, they will need to use, they will need to UNO for it.
That's correct. Currently reviewing the building permit application for.
But the, uh, what I'm trying to figure out is what are trigger mechanisms, and the UNO would be held up until Michelle's letter is satisfied if we move this forward.
So we have.
Recordable plans and all the conditions to be satisfied, which is including completion of the previous land development application.
If you to, yes, that was in my letter, if your recommendation is to approve the development, uh, contingent of not them, I'd write in my letter, yes.
Since we're beyond one year, and we don't want to mess with one fifty. Okay, we'll just hang it to one year eleven. Okay, that's, does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, but why aren't we pressing things that need to be addressed?
But we are, they are, they would need, in order to get a UNO for that facility, that all needs to be addressed.
Okay.
As a trigger mechanism. It's, I'm, I'm just proposing that as a potential way to, to bridge the gap. Or we could.
Or if it goes through land development, it would have to be marked checked as well. Well, I think the threshold question here is, what the land development waiver, yes or no?
Which is.
That's the first question, and then what we're saying is rather than us play games with the one fifty, just say, get it done, and then and we have Michelle's letter, we're finished.
And the question is, does this warrant land development? You've made a case that it doesn't warrant.
See, and if you look at your, uh, your sound of definitions of buildings, it doesn't.
Let me ask a question, you, this is being built on concrete?
On impervious, yeah.
On impervious, so it stays impervious. Okay, and there's no building. Michelle, what do you?
So the reason presented to test this stuff outside, is this a dangerous thing to be tested inside?
No, I mean, it's, it uses the hydrogen from the app.
Yep, I get it.
So, you know, it helps to be.
I know the technology, I'm just wondering, like, why are we testing it? It needs to be tested outside for a reason?
I, I think to utilize that hydrogen in the atmosphere, and these things typically are outside, so I think that's where it has to.
Just to, okay.
Think of it as a gas stage.
Yeah, I get it, I'm just, I'm just saying.
And, and at the same time, I don't have as much familiarity with that as well, I, I kind of feel more comfortable going through proper procedures, I feel like they're there for a purpose, I understand, I understand, you're, you're saying your hardship is the company would begin. When did they, when did they initiate that you had to do these tests as well? Because you said that, that you have officials coming from your, in your letter to see this, to make sure the tests are out, so how long with your product, when has it been required to go through this type of testing?
I'm not, I'm not sure I understand the question.
You, so with the purpose of this waiver, or let's see if not say it's a waiver, purpose, what you want to build is a testing site for the hydrogen to, you know, go through for the electric cars, what, etc. You, in the letter, it states that this is a requirement that is necessary for the testing, how long has that been a requirement?
So testing these products, I mean, this is an existing product, we have units all over the world.
Right.
We've always been testing these products, uh, the, the requirement to test them in this building is just that we're solidating into the facility, we're bringing, you know, all of that manufacturing.
Right, and they're doing this same thing at their Wormster location.
So it's not a, it's not a new thing, it's an ongoing thing.
But it is newer to this location, obviously, and that, that's why I was checking out this, wasn't sure if this is around the, you're already operating at that. Again, I, I do, uh, I would rather see it go through the proper channels.
But I, I don't think it's going through any proper channel, I don't.
No, I don't think it is.
With that.
I, I understand it.
I mean, I'm not sure this warrants, I'm not sure this warrants land development, I'm sure, I, I, go ahead, Mike.
So when they initially came in with this application, um, quickly understood that it was more than just putting the tanks outside, that, that this is part of what on, how like the aid is the operation.
Quickly understood that it was more than just putting the tanks outside, that the, this is part of what on, like the A is the operation. So they're they're um assembling everything on the inside, um but before they ship the the units off-site, they have to test them. Well, they can't test them inside, so they're proposing to test them outside, so since that operation is moving outside. It's an expansion, technically it's an expansion of use, uh but no uh building addition, there's no uh. That sort of thing, it's the, it's a expansion of.
Parking trigger.
Right, no parking trigger or anything.
Happening, it's just a machine running.
They they just run machines as they.
Yeah, good.
Would function out.
Outdoors, right, okay.
So for instance, you know, these units have been recently installed at the lake down at uh.
Right.
Down in South Philly, so that's what they do, they're they're outside, they're running outside, so same thing. Just to make sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
We have the Eden Stadium convention in one unit right now that they franchise it's gonna use. Uh we deal with hydrogen cars, uh all parts and things like that, that are gonna be operating in that area and people around. Take up people from the airport, things like that.
Right. I guess I I understand, you know, that the rush, I don't see the hardship so much where, why do. Now, again, is it land development, that's something that we have to decide, I think I'd rather just have it go through the proper channels.
I I I don't think we're asking for a hardship, I think, I I think this doesn't.
You're asking, you're asking for a waiver, I'm curious what the hardship is that you would want the waiver, but I understand what you're saying, so you're saying that.
Good. But if I could just clarify, he's got a two-pronged argument.
Right.
It's not a land development, in which case you don't need waiver. Or it is a land development, but we want a waiver. Either way, you'll take.
However, we'll give it to.
But do, uh uh Michelle, do you think this, uh is it the level of a land development?
I didn't think that.
Sorry, do you think it goes up to the level of a land development?
I think it just meets that because of the expansion of the use outdoors. But it's already, the the site's already been developed, like they've demonstrated, it's already pavement. Water is already there, the the impurpus are there, the landscaping is there, the buffering is there, everything is already there. But they're technically moving their operation outside, which was not discussed. Right, with the board supervisor, so so that's, that's what sparked the um the land development.
Is this going to meet Sado requirements as well then?
Yeah, yeah, every, you know, everything would have to be still. Included in the shows.
This one before the planning commission as well?
No, waiver of land development.
Waiver did not.
If we uh, if we don't waive it, I think it was done, correct? That's.
Well, if we don't, so so if I get this right, if we don't waive it, and there's, and there is no land development, then they've got what they've asked for anyway.
Well, they would, right now, they have a determination by Mike that it is a link.
Okay.
So if you don't do anything, then they do a land development. Um and the point is. They're not even sure where in the Sado they would find regulations.
Flyer and accessory structure. Yeah, it's in the building.
This falls under the same section we ran into with the church on their accessory pavilion. And our word is not particularly clear, I, Mike has a tough time with this section, and it's something I know that we are looking at to amend. So that we can clarify on, clarify that. I I would just say I'm of the opinion, I would be happy to make a motion to approve the waiver of land development, subject to Michelle's letter. Subject to the U N O not being um issued until such time as satisfaction of. The previous requirements of the prior land development are met, and that should all run concurrently so that they can. Move forward with their project, but that would hold that up until they have satisfied Michelle's remaining punch list on the previous land development. And that subject to any building permit requirements that are brought forth by our Code of Enforcement Office.
Wow.
Think we we make them finish up what they have.
That what he said.
And and then. All right, I'll try it again, I think a motion to grant the waiver of land development, subject to Michelle's letter. Which requires them to finish everything in their previous land development, okay?
Okay.
Subject to any building permit requirements, and that the U N O for this particular accessory use cannot be granted until those are satisfied.
I'm gonna suggest one additional condition, which is not a big deal, is subject to the township's receipt of a letter from somebody. Explaining why this is completely safe and of no concerns.
Thank you.
Just from, from the applicant.
Well, from somebody who actually knows.
I mean, how how long?
It's not, this isn't a new procedure.
Same as happens according to the way Chris says it, how long is it gonna take?
To to instruct or?
Everything, all done.
Sounds like a month and a half.
All right, so if we, if we get all the stuff done. That needs to be done, and next month come back and say, okey-dokey. Let's move on, I mean, there's things that have to be done, right, Michelle? Let's finish that punch list, man, I don't know, I'm saying table is gonna have fun. Until they get all that stuff done, I'm okay with finishing all this. But if it's gonna take a month and a half, what are we doing, is two weeks, is that gonna be a problem for the company?
Yeah, it it will be, it will be, I mean, again.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to, the same. There's some things that out outlier.
I I think what we're, what would be accomplished here at the way it's granted. Was that we could move concurrently, the building and application could be reviewed, we're finishing those punch lists, so we're kind of moving them both. Along at this.
How long the punches been hanging out? Couple months. I I'm a contractor.
I I get.
Somebody hands me a punch list, I get it done in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
And they're hanging out a couple of months, this is what bothers me. Okay, I think, I I would like to propose, we we table this until next month, when all the punches are done. Okay, it's all cleared up, and then we'll, we'll move on, I'm okay with everything you're talking about. I'm just a little opposed to waiting a couple of months to get a punch list done. That's fine, that's my opinion. So.
Another, yeah, there is a significant escrow.
I get it. I wait a long.
Really, we don't really want the escrow, we don't want the.
I and we're. Trust me, we're, we're a pro-growth board. I I don't think anybody can hold stuff up for, but when we're waiting two months to get a punch list done. Uh that's, I'm sorry. When, when I'm asked to do a punch list, I get it done in a week, two weeks, and and we're out. So we're making, wait a couple of months to get that done, I'm sorry, I have an issue with that. I don't know what anybody else thinks here, I don't know what Michelle thinks.
But that's not.
Well, I have a question. Developer.
Developer is current owner of the property is Cabot. And some cabin enterprise is entity.
It's not P D C.
It's not B D C, B D C is a ten. B D C is the applicant for this land development waiver, B D C has no control over the completion. Of that punch list, other than.
They can now put pressure on.
Of it's not. It's not E D C not completing the punch list.
So what I'm proposing is gonna take an extra two weeks. Gonna say, you know, it's gonna take a month and a half to finish all this. I'm saying, I'm not opposed to the, you know, what you're doing. I'm just saying I want to hold it off until we get all that done. And I'll give the.
The other conditions, basically, you need the Michelle nod.
Right.
And that takes care of it.
Right, Mr. Chairman, are you, were you suggesting that we table whether or not we. Whether or not we have to waive the, the thing off.
Yeah, cause then we get all our, everything's satisfied.
Cause another option too is if they go through formal development, it is a longer process, but again, this is another thing that I thought of just gonna fly, help me out here as well. Mike says it could be on that line there, what would happen if we were to approve the waiver and somebody else would say, hey. That that you shouldn't have done that, that is land development, does that matter or not?
Once we have true business.
We have objected about to you, okay. I I honestly, again, I I. Proper channel with our P D.
You understand that? With um, would you be opposed to the building permit being able to be continued to be reviewed but not issued in that time period?
That would just going to be my follow-up.
Yeah, I wouldn't be opposed.
But, just so, I mean, that way it's teed up.
Saying stop, just saying, let's.
So.
From our, that's our pressure.
I will amend my motion. And. Make a motion to table the waiver of land development to the June meeting.
Yeah.
A reconsideration, but also authorize the staff to continue to process the building permit application of issuing it prior to our vote.
Yes.
That clear, Michael?
Yes.
We now have three motions.
No, that's why I re, I re, I got rid of the old one too, I said I'd re-estate that, so I'm only on the one at this point, blue floor.
I I like the way that we're going with this, but I want to say that again. I, you guys know where I stand, so I'm gonna stay, it's better than.
Moved and second, it'll basically be the same amount of time, but we have some pressure, we have some force behind us getting that.
Just wanna put it to bed, and if Michelle says they've done everything you asked them to do, we're done.
Yeah, we'd like to do that too.
Okay.
Moved in second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those say nay.
Aye.
Nay. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen.
Should uh probably check with Phil if we went to preliminary hearing again. Sure we get the checklist stuff. Well, I don't know what you're talking about, if we wait for preliminary final land development in the future, it might be an idea to make sure we put pressure to get those things, so this is waiver of land of. Right, I'm saying it's different when it comes up again.
The sort of unique situation because of the.
No, absolutely, I'm saying.
Previous application.
Completely different situation.
Yes.
We should also go back.
But we don't have, we wouldn't, most of those applications, none of those applications. Have a prior land development that we're trying to get wrapped up.
No, but oftentimes as a lack, or if there's still some things that need to be done, the punch list similar, similarly to what we just.
It's a different punch list, this is a punch list.
Completely different, but as you want a situation, that's why I suggested as they come up.
Okey-dokey.
All right, moving on, new business, this will be resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighteen. The acceptance of right-of-way along Yoder Road. To ultimately allow for the Yoder Road sidewalk connection to occur.
Make a motion to approve twenty twenty-three eighteen acceptance of right-of-way on Yoder Road.
Second, moved and seconded, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Moving on, resolution twenty twenty-three dash nineteen, authorizing the submission of a grant application. For the twenty twenty-three D C D C F A Greenways Trails and Recreation Program. Which would provide funding for the Yoder Road Sidewalk Connection Program.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three nineteen.
Second, moved then seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. All right, moving on, item E. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty, authorizing the submission of the grant application. For the twenty twenty-three D C D Multi-Modal Transportation Fund, better known as M T F. For the State Route one thirteen relocation project. This would allow for the engineering, preliminary engineering design.
This is similar to the previous application that was submitted in twenty twenty-two. With no changes to the amount, the grant request amount, um or essentially any of the, the application pieces. Very similar to the one that was submitted one year.
To the tune of one point two million dollars.
That is correct.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three twenty.
Second.
Thank you.
Moved in second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Nice having. All right. F, uh this was, this is the authorization to advertise. For the conditional use of one-ten Christopher Lane. So we're just advertising for a conditional use hearing to be held and.
Yeah, we'll make that. Make a motion to authorize the advertisement of the conditional use hearing for one-ten Christopher Lane.
Moved that second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Uh finally, the approval of the First Amendment to the uh. Management agreement with, for the Leterock Golf Club with, I guess it's Great Life Golf LLC these days. Um. Sold out.
Awesome, old guy.
And remind me, this is going to uh allow for the transfer of the liquor license name?
Yeah, it's just.
So township and the authority um and. Both uh. Insurances will cover us all.
All right, so entertain a motion. Second, moved then second, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay. Is this, this point in the meeting, we open the floor for second discussion period, for anyone wishing to be recognized.
Hello, Scott.
It's good to see you.
Those lost that.
Again. This is actually an acceptance from an old land developer.
So we're taking it.
Oftentimes, there's right-of-way that's been offered on a land development. Yes, yeah, it's sometimes offered on the plan, but maybe not formally.
That was free.
Yes.
Or get grant funding to put a sidewalk.
Yeah, I think kind of fixtures or anything.
Those Dodgers, I mean, you're thirteen running games.
All right, Mister Jakowski, is there a?
Continue to adjourn. Second, it all in pay pride.
Aye.